Everybody to the West Jordan City Council meeting, it is Wednesday, June 5th. We have six members of the council present, uh, council member Bloom should be joining us online if she hasn't already, she is awesome. Um, is attending remotely. Sorry. Here we go. They'll, they'll fix this. Uh, our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our West Jordan police cadets. Come on up to the lectern guys. Put your heart on you, your hand on your heart and let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Our, uh, our next item on the agenda or our, uh, our, uh, first special recognition item will be a badge pinning for our fire department. I believe Chief Max Field is here and will be guiding this.
Thank you Chair and Council. Um, thanks for taking some time and allowing us to recognize our great firefighters. Um, before we do the badge pinning, I just wanted to mention one special award that was given to one of our firefighters. He recently completed his supervising fire officer designation through the state. And if I could have Mike Jensen, Captain Mike Jensen come up and join me. Um, I spoke to you for this is awarded through the state. I, I spoke to the director of you for today and kind of got some numbers. And he said that there are only 141 firefighters in the state right now that have earned this designation out of approximately 7,000. So we have a few of them in our department, which we're proud of. Um, but Captain Jensen here was able to fulfill the requirements and be credentialed as a supervising fire officer. We just wanted to recognize him as well. Can speak. Um, he wasn't able to make it tonight. Captain Mike Moon, who was promoted to captain, he will be pinned by his daughter, Graceland. Abraham Rosales was promoted to paramedic and just completed paramedic school a few months ago. And he will be pinned by one of our other firefighters, Isaac Calbridge. Dylan Ricks, uh, is a firefighter who came on about a year ago and he just completed his year's probation. And he will be pinned by Hannah Wade. Daniel Contreras is a firefighter who just completed his probation. He will be pinned by Natalie. Kia Jepson is another firefighter that has joined our ranks, just completed probation. Ann Gardner is a firefighter off probation as well. Those four were hired together. Newest firefighters, um, two of them have worked. His first shift in the next day or two, that is Shelley Jones. Who will be pinned by her mom, Judy. Clara A C, who will be pinned by Amy, Amy A C and Stephen Webster, who will be pinned by Tanner Lewis. And those are the promotions and, and new firefighters that we have at this time. We'll go ahead and yeah, if you want to kind of make a U. Great, thank you. And then, yeah, we do. Um, and then those who have the badges, if you'd like to go ahead at this time and just pin them on your loved one.
If you happen to hit through the uniform, it's okay. We got some paramedics here, so.
More than welcome. Come right up.
Don't sit down. We want pictures.
Thank you. And then would you, would counsel like?
We're gonna stand up right here behind you. So scoot in as much as you can here and we'll get a picture from about where the chief is. Thank you.
For those friends and family who have come. If you'd like to meet. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. We'll give them just a, a minute or two to clear out a little bit. I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to see that some people are here for more. Not that that wasn't great, but we got a lot to talk about tonight. So that's, that's great. All right. Next on the agenda, we're going to introduce the 2024 Western Stampede royalty, and this will be Ashley from our, uh, events team coming on up. Go ahead and push the button on that to light it on the middle mic there to light it up.
We could not ask for a better, better trio to represent our city. And I'll now turn our time over to our royalty chair, Jen Main, to introduce our royalty and then they will share uh, their American cowgirl speeches with you.
Hi. As some of you know, I, um, have been a longtime resident of West Jordan. I moved to West Jordan when I was five years old. And the Western Stampede, um, immediately became one of the favorite things of my summer every year from a five-year-old on to my future. When I chose to, um, purchase my forever home, my husband and I chose West Jordan as a city where we wanted to raise our family. And in 2019, when the opportunity presented itself to become a member of the Western Stampede rodeo committee, I was thrilled at the chance to be able to do that. And I couldn't have been more excited to have the opportunity to work with rodeo royalty. I am not. With high honors. She's been accepted into Weber State University's nursing program and is beginning her, her college career this summer. Um, while she's also representing the Western Stampede. So she's got a full plate as she goes about her summer months. Um, she has been involved in the National Technical Honor Society. She was president of the National Honor Society at her high school. She was a Sterling Scholar. And she was involved in many community service projects. She enjoys volunteering. In training and horse therapy, and she also enjoys dancing and playing the fiddle. Our first attendant is Reagan Wilson. She's 16 years old and she's the daughter of Paul and Cammy Jo Wilson. She comes from South Jordan and just finished her sophomore year at Bingham High School. She believes in God, country, family, and her biggest passion is horses and the Western way of life. She plans on attending Utah State University and majoring in veterinary and science. For the last seven years, she's competed in 4H equine events on the county, state and national level. She's currently a 4H state horse ambassador. And her past 4H achievements include five-time state horse qualifier, two-handed county grand champion, third place in the National Horse Bowl competition. In addition to 4H, she competes in Utah High School rodeo, competing in the cutting and pole bending events. She enjoys the challenge of competing as it takes a lot of horsemanship, courage and grit. At Bingham High School, she is a 4.0 GPA student, a two-time varsity letter athlete in high school swimming. And is currently enrolled in the Mandarin Chinese Bridge Program through the University of Utah, after studying nine years of dual immersion classes. She loves the equine world, especially rodeo. Last year she was our first attendant of the Western Stampede. So in 2023, she was our first attendant and she is also our first attendant this year in 2024. And, um, she loves being an ambassador of our city's rodeo, and that's the reason that she, um, ran for our contest again this year. Some of her fondest memories as a little girl are attending summer rodeos. And of course she was captivated by the rodeo queens. It wasn't just their beauty and sparkles that she remembers, but their kindness, toughness, poise as a cowgirl and a Western ambassador. And that's the kind of example that she would like to be to other little girls as they attend our rodeo. And our second attendant is Victoria Gurlov. She is 18 years old. She's the daughter of Tim and Yelena Gurlov. Um, this is her first year trying out for rodeo queen royalty. She just graduated from Mountain Heights Academy. And she was part of the National Honor Society and their hope squad. She plans to attend college this fall. Victoria is passionate about leadership and serving others. She had 600 plus service hours during this last school year. She strives to be a role model for those who know her and is a member of the Utah American Legion Auxiliary. Victoria has always loved horses for as long as she can remember, but she could not be with them for a big part of her life because she had horse allergies. But by God's grace, she was able to conquer those allergies and start taking riding lessons and volunteering at Durango Ranch, which is located here in West Jordan, where she, um, and she hopes to continue to ride for the rest of her life. Um, she is currently learning barrel racing and team roping and plans to be a header. That is part of the team roping events where you rope the head of the cattle and another partner ropes the feet at the same time. Um, Victoria loves spending time with her family, coworkers and friends. Her hobbies include baking, swimming, reading, roping, and most of all, spending time with horses. And I'm going to turn the time over to each of them to present their speeches. We'll start with Isabella.
I am going to give a little bit of a caveat real quick. Uh, when I competed, I did have my speech memorized. But with the start of nursing school and all the medical terms that are going through my head, it is in a back file I cannot currently access, so I will have to refer to my notes a little bit. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a quote that I feel perfectly summarizes the American cowgirl and the legacy she has left behind. Courage is being scared to death and saddling up anyways. Today I want to take you on a journey through the spirit of the American cowgirl. In a land where rugged individualism and perseverance are celebrated, the American cowgirl stands tall as a symbol of strength, resilience and freedom. I vision her silhouette etched against the fiery hues of a desert sunset, her hat tipped low and her eyes fixed on that horizon. She is a symbol of strength and grace, her spirit as wild and untamed as the Mustangs she rides. She represents more than mere attire. She represents a way of life. From the vast plains of the Wild West to the bustling arenas of modern rodeos, the American cowgirl has left an indelible mark on the cultural landscape of our nation. With her fearless spirit and unyielding determination, she has captivated hearts and minds for generations. With her cowboy hat pulled low and her boots firmly planted in the stirrups, the cowgirl faces each challenge with unwavering courage. Whether she's wrangling cattle on the open range or competing in the arena, she approaches every task with grit and grace. But the cowgirl's legacy extends far beyond the confines of a rodeo arena. She's a symbol of empowerment to women everywhere, proving that strength knows no boundaries. From Annie Oakley, the sharpshooting sensation who captivated hearts around the world, to contemporary cowgirls like Amberly Snyder, whose fearless spirit shined bright in the arena. The legacy of the American cowgirl lives on in the stories of those who dared to dream and dared to ride. Through her grit and grace, the American cowgirl teaches us the importance of perseverance in the face of adversity. She reminds us that success is not measured by the absence of challenges, but by the courage to overcome them. As we honor the American cowgirl, let us also remember the countless women who have followed in her footsteps, carving out their own place in history. Maybe draw inspiration from their courage and determination as we navigate the challenges of our own lives. In closing, let us tip our hats to the American cowgirl, a symbol of the frontier, a guardian of tradition and a beacon of empowerment for all who dare to chase their dreams against the backdrop of the setting sun. May her legacy continue to inspire generations to come. Thank you.
You don't have to be great to start, but you need to start to be great. Some of America's greatest cowgirls are Marilyn Scott Framark, the first Miss Rodeo America. And Fern Sawyer, who was the first all-around champion. And we all know Jackie Crawford, who won the breakaway championship the first year it was at the national finals rodeo. All of these cowgirls started somewhere. This past year, I've started my own cowgirl journey, competing in high school rodeo in the cutting event. Cutting is a cattle working competition. You enter the herd and cut out cows one at a time and work them for a total of two and a half minutes. You are then judged based on your control over the cattle. I felt ready for my first rodeo. I had done my homework. I knew the rules. I had taken the lessons and I had practiced and practiced. I was confident. Well, as confident as I could be. I was ready. I walk into the herd and cut out my first cow. Wait, when do I put my hand down again? Should I be going faster? Do I really know what I'm doing? This is harder than I thought. Then all of a sudden, my cow goes one way and I go the other. I lose my cow. My confidence quickly dwindles. This is not how I pictured this going. And I still have to cut two more cows. The buzzer finally goes off. I scored 60 points. That's the lowest score you can get. Disappointment was an understatement. I am an American cowgirl. I dust myself off and get back on. One failure does not define me, my abilities or my dreams. This day was my start to becoming better. And since then I've learned and grown in my abilities and it's paid off. I'd like to say my 60-point days are far behind me. But I am grateful for the cowgirl they have made me today. I have my phone just in case, but just like Isabel, I had this memorized the day of. Hi, my name is Victoria Gurlov and I have been living in West Jordan for all of my life. About a month ago, I honestly didn't plan to be standing here in front of you all today. You see, four months ago, I decided that'd be a good idea to chop my hair off. So later on, when I decided that I wanted to participate in the rodeo royalty for the West Jordan Stampede, I realized that having long hair was a big part of queening. Everyone began advising me to buy hair extensions in order to have a better chance. So I bought the hair extensions. And let me just say, I was not happy wearing them. I didn't feel like myself. I felt unhappy, uncomfortable, and I began to get stressed out on what to do. This made me realize that modern beauty standards require us to make alterations to our looks, making unnecessary changes in order to reach some ideal standard. All because you're supposed to feel like you're not good enough. Being an American cowgirl is all about the natural beauty and strength. In a world that is constantly changing and evolving, the cowgirl remains a steadfast symbol. She serves as a testament that genuine beauty and strength are enduring qualities that persist your time, regardless of societal expectations or changing trends. Now, let's take a moment to appreciate the timeless beauty and strength of cowgirls today. There are many women here and there are many other famous cowgirls who represent this as well. To quote Dale Evans, a Western actress, singer and songwriter, the cowgirl faces life head-on, lives by her lights and makes no excuses. This is what made me decide to come as who I am. I don't want to conform to the ideal image that is presented today. Just like Ashley Alderson, who won Miss Rodeo America in 2007, her headshot photo contains her having short hair. I wasn't too into it at the moment. This is why it is important to be who you are. Because we as cowgirls are all different, but we all stand for and represent in what we believe. Since the 19th century, cowgirls began to stand for and represent what we believe, like our country, our freedom, authenticity and more. Cowgirls began to ride, help out with ranch work and began to compete. A connection was formed between these cowgirls and their horses. And to this day, there is still a deep love for horses by every cowgirl. Here we are today, still being the American cowgirl who have withstood the test of time. I love our country and I love being a cowgirl, which is why I would love the opportunity to represent the American cowgirl at the West Jordan Stampede.
These girls are incredible and I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to work with them. Victoria is a West Jordan resident. She just barely started riding horses nine months ago. I think you should be very impressed with her. She, um, is an excellent representative of our city and, um, an excellent representative of the American cowgirl, along with her, um, cohorts on our, on our rodeo royalty who demonstrated incredible horsemanship skills at our contest. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have you come up and let's get a picture. So let's have the royalty come up and we'll come down and, cause we'll all fit in front this time. All right. Congratulations and thank you for being here tonight. Our, uh, next item up for bid is public comment period. This is your opportunity to address the council and things related to West Jordan, hopefully for the most part. And, uh, if you're in the room, all you need to do is just come on up to the mic. If you're online, you need to raise your hand on the Zoom. Um, we do have a public hearing or a couple of public comment periods coming up on the budget specifically. So if you're here to speak on um, the enterprise funds transfer that is coming up here in just a minute. Or if you're here to speak on the municipal building authority public hearing or the redevelopment agency public hearing. Um, that will be coming up here in just a, a few minutes as well. But anything else, this is your chance. So go ahead and come on up if there's anybody in the room and give us your name. And, uh, if you live in West Jordan, we'd like to know that too.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my name is Paul Zuckerman. Um, I represent the Maine Society of the United States. Uh, I serve in a, as a humane policy leader in a, in a voluntary capacity. Um, I understand that you've had lots of good information about, uh, puppy mills, their nature and the practices that are provided there. Uh, I would like to go in a different direction and talk about the end user, the consumer and the impact on that consumer and on the municipality that that business is in. Um, in no way is it our intention to prevent commerce from happening. Uh, we don't want to see pet stores closed, uh, that we want to see the model that uh, big places like Petco and PetSmart do where they don't need to sell pets to make a living to, to thrive. Um, in fact, they will bring animals in from your shelter to get it updated, to reduce the pressure and overcrowding and the number of euthanizations that might happen. Um, so the sale tax at a typical pet store is a family walks in, you might imagine, and they wander around, maybe they're there to buy uh, supplies for their, uh, pets at home. But they are naturally drawn over as we all would be to the, to the puppies and kittens that are in the store. And then the trade, the, the, uh, salesperson who is trained really to build that emotional connection and try to put a positive spin on that, on the animals that they see. And they only pull out the animals from the back of the store that are are in good health, happy, alive, awake, um, very, very, uh, puppy-like. Um, and they will, uh, not have much information in the way of, um, records about where the animal came from, um, uh, the breed, um, purity, even though it looks, it possibly might look like a purebred, it most likely is not. And also the healthcare records, um, many a time these animals come with just a cursory at best, sign off by a veterinarian that, that the animal came out of the puppy mill, uh, in a healthy state. Uh, warranties usually written for the, for the store to protect the store. Um, not the customer and they're long and difficult to read. Um, pricing, very expensive. The, the, uh, broker buys the animal for $50, but by the time the person in the store buys it, it can be a thousand dollars or more, uh, thinking that they're getting a purebred animal. Uh, the, and financing is predatory. They have a lot of, uh, high interest rates and it's not. They have a lot of high interest rates, and it's not very clear until later on for the customer. So the customer takes the animal home and they find out later that they have repetitive motion problems, the withdrawal or aggression because they've been raised without socialization. They have diseases, sometimes zoonotic that spread to people, parvovirus and such. What are the customers' chances? They can take the animal back, but they're afraid to do that, that it might be put down. They can surrender it to your shelter, which crowds the shelter even more.
That was the time's up. I think I forgot to mention the three minutes thing, but appreciate your comments and... Okay, no worries. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to address the council? Go ahead and come on up.
Good evening. My name is Amy Mata, and I live in Salt Lake City. I volunteer for a nonprofit called Bailing Out Benji. Hello again. Last time we spoke several months ago, I was speaking about how the USDA at the federal level is responsible for enforcing the Animal Welfare Act. And I wanted to follow up this evening to say that the USDA underwent an audit of how effective they are at enforcing the Animal Welfare Act. And that was done in two thousand twenty-one and found that approximately half of the complaints filed to the USDA about puppy mills were mishandled. And these are complaints from consumers, from watchdog groups like Bailing Out Benji, the Humane Society of the United States, and Best Friends Animal Society. Also, the audit showed that their USDA's database of breeders... So a big selling point with stores is they say, "These come from USDA breeders." That means they are not from puppy mills, which is untrue because, as I've explained, the Animal Welfare Act only ensures that the dog receives food, water, veterinary care, and is in an enclosure bigger than six inches from the length of its body. No socialization, no playing with toys, no running on green grass, despite the videos they show you in the stores. So even if a puppy mill abides by the letter of the law, most people consider those inhumane conditions. The database that the USDA has that keeps track of all the licensed breeders and inspection reports, photographs, is disjointed. They don't have a data manager. So oftentimes, when groups like Bailing Out Benji request information through the Freedom of Information Act, they have to go through their records by hand and get the information to us. There are approximately two thousand puppy mills that are licensed by the USDA, but we believe that there's over ten thousand mills. And so obviously, they're not registering as USDA breeders. So it's a big problem. I ask that you, passing me, Pastor Ordens, thank you.
We might have given you another second or two, but thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to address the council? I'm not seeing any online with a hand raised.
There is one individual of the folks that are online, Ms. Julie Barfus.
All right, let's go to Ms. Barfus. Online, you should be able to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I did send emails. Most of my comments by way of an email because it's longer than three minutes would really take. But I wanted to just come on and state for the record my opinion and the fact that I'm very upset and disappointed in the very public display that happened yesterday on city property near the Public Works Building. It was very offensive partisan political messages on that corner. And my understanding from what I received by way of correspondence from the city was that it was deemed freedom of speech. I am not an attorney, but I have a very good attorney. And when I read through the city ordinances, I feel like there were several areas of city ordinances that were definitely violated by that individual. And I just want to state for the record that I am disappointed and unhappy with how we handled it as a city. I think that we could and should do better for the citizens of the city in terms of being good citizens. That's all.
All right, thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else?
There is no one of the eight individuals online that have their hand raised. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and close public comment then. We'll go to the next item on the agenda is reports to the council, and this will be the council first. Council reports to the council. So anybody from the council want to report on what you've been up to? We'll go council member Lamb, then council member Green.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank our event staff for the Memorial Day events that were held in our city park. I was able to attend, and both the car show and the memorial were very well received by those that were there. And I heard we even had like three to four hundred cars that were turned away that weren't able to be a part of the show. So is that number high, three hundred, maybe two hundred?
I think there were four hundred and fifty-eight cars that participated and about a hundred cars that were turned away because they showed up late and without registering.
They just didn't have room.
But yeah.
But either way, it was well attended. And I'm going to leave another council member to talk about the memorial. But I just want to thank the event staff for all the hard work they did on that. And it seems like it's something that people want to come to, and they do attend every year. So thank you.
So that's exactly what I was, that's where I was going to go is, once again, is to thank the event staff. Corey, make sure they all know. They did a great job with the car show and with the Memorial Day event at eleven thirty. How well-attended it was, my wife dropped me off at Veterans Park. She had to drive all the way around the park around and then go park over in the district court building. So there was no parking, so that tells you how many people were there. So I got to walk through the car show as well and saw that, and even saw some of our city staff there. So thanks to the city staff for supporting city events as a resident. So Greg, that was directed at you, by the way, if you didn't know that. But the event that we had there at the flagpole was a glad event, or was a great event. Glad that we're carrying on that tradition that we restarted four or five years ago. And, you know, it was great that we had the military member, Sergeant Major Harris, give a fine speech. But not only that, but we had Congressman Owens that... I think we were one of two or three venues in fourth congressional district that he showed up to. And so that tells you where, that, you know, he's involved with West Jordan as well. And so that's great that we had that kind of attendance, and there was some substantial attendance there. So thanks for all the effort and all your work.
Council member Green, there's a way to get closer parking next year if you want to.
Drive a nicer car and park it on the grass.
You know, in five years, in five years, my car will be antique, so okay.
Council member Bedore.
I wanted, of course, to echo my sentiments about what a wonderful ceremony it was in the park for Memorial Day. Also, wanted to thank council member Green for helping to set up a tour of the Utah National Guard facilities. Some of us were able to attend that. And I thought that was a wonderful time to get to see the men and women who are there, the dedication they put into it, and just to see the kind of operation they have out there. It was wonderful to see, but also inspiring to see that as well. So thanks, Council member Green, for helping put that together and for those of the council who were able to be there as well.
Excellent. I'll just say that I drove my Hyundai Kona up onto the grass to be a part, and they wouldn't let me. Just kidding. Just kidding, I didn't try that. All right, next item on the agenda is the council office report. We'll go to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to update you. I sent an email, I think, a couple of weeks ago about the plans for the Western Stampede Parade for you. We have an entry for members of the city council and members of the youth council to be together. We have a couple golf carts, some candy that you can hand out, not throw. And so we've got that set up, and we'll have more information about the stampede as soon as I get that from the event staff. But looking forward to seeing each of you at the rodeo in a month. Thank you. That's all we have for tonight.
Are you going to have enough candy so that we don't run out?
I'm told by the event staff that she's concerned the golf carts won't hold what she has.
It'll hold it. It depends on how much you give to the first kid on the sidewalk. That's the lucky kid, right? Either the first one or the last one, depending on how you portion it out. All right, nothing else from the council office? Is the mayor online?
Yes, the mayor is online.
Awesome. Mayor, would you like to give us a report from afar?
I'm happy to. Thank you for letting me tie in remotely. I am out of town. I'll be back tomorrow. In the process of celebrating my anniversary, so I'm with my wonderful wife. Anyway, back to my report. First item on my list is Pioneer Hall. If you've been past there recently, you may have noticed we did some major improvements on the landscaping there. This was done by our Parks Department, all done in-house. If you get an opportunity to go by and take a look, it's beautiful, and it has turned the corner on how that looks. Now we are in the process of redoing the parking lot. You know, that parking lot was in sad shape. That is getting done now, and I'll report on that when that's finished up. Speaking of Parks Department, they did a repair. If you see that little square there, that's in a neighborhood there, and that spot is owned and supposedly maintained by the city. However, it was in poor shape, and residents would leave shopping carts, sometimes refrigerators and other debris there. And we just go there and clean it up and chop the weeds down. This year, the parks had landscaped that, put in a bench, and made it a beautiful part of this community and just made that area just feel and look so much better. We're hoping not to get the same donations we have in the past. And the striping between Seventy Hundred South and the roundabout that was brought up in the last council meeting has been completed. That's what it looks like today. Of course, when the work gets into full, or again, on Seventy Hundred South, that will get done again. So this is just temporary to keep this flowing in between parts of the construction there. People to tune at Station Fifty-Five redid their landscape realisation. The Parks Department didn't do this, the firefighters did it themselves. The crew did it all on their own. They went above and beyond the expectations of their positions, all while remaining in service, responding, providing excellent service to our citizens. So they would get working and take off our call and come back and go back to work. This was a major project that beautified this station and makes our community look better. So thank you for the tune be at Station Fifty-Five, the work you did for our community. And UTA is due to partnership with the Western Stampede. So if you get a ticket for the Western Stampede, or if you get a ticket for the carnival or other events, you can ride UTA for free to come there. No more hassle of parking. You thought parking was bad at the Memorial Day event? It's much worse because we have so many more people shop at Western Stampede. And getting out will be a breeze because you could walk over to the track station or the bus stop, and no additional charge that will be included in your ticket. This is our first year. We've been working on this for a couple of years. This is the first year we're actually doing it. So let us know if you like it, and we can do it again next year. Some upcoming events. Already, we've already started our food trucks, and they'll continue to happen at Rodwood Park every Tuesday. Hope to see you out there. We get a good turnout and good variety of options to choose from. My mayor open office hours is tomorrow. Yes, I'll be back tomorrow for this. I'm coming back. So if you or someone you know would like to come and meet with the mayor, the door will be open. I'd love to hear from you. Our first Friday concert this week is going to be Friday at Veterans Memorial Park. There'll be food trucks, and there'll be activities for the children prior, and then the concert afterward. So we'd love to see you there. These first Friday concerts are done by local Utah artists. Okay, let's go to the next one that was there. On Juneteenth, which is Monday, the city offices will be closed. So nineteenth is the federal Juneteenth, but seventeenth is the state's Juneteenth. So all city offices are closed on Juneteenth. We encourage you to celebrate and have a great time. That is my report. Open to questions if you want, or come and visit me at my mayor's office open hours tomorrow.
Any questions for the mayor? All right, we're not seeing any. Enjoy your, I was going to say honeymoon, but it's your anniversary trip.
It's better than honeymoon. And I will be leaving at this meeting here. I won't stick around for the rest of the meeting. I know a lot of his budget things, but my budget committee has a good grasp on it, so you'll be in good hands.
Yeah, we've got the budget people here that know what they're doing.
They do, so thank you. Enjoy your meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, city administrator. This is staff report. Go to Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Just one item of note from me and then a report from our Public Utilities Director. H Mart has been a long time coming. I hope you saw H Mart will be opening this Friday. There's a ribbon cutting this Friday that you're invited to attend. It's a welcome, finally, welcome opening on a building that's been vacant in our community. So we're happy to have that complete. Greg Davenport has a report from the wastewater division that we need to share with you.
Thanks for letting me be here today. I hope you all got the email from Alan. Every year, we submit a report to the State of Utah Department of Environmental Quality. It's called an MWPP report that stands for Municipal Wastewater Planning Program Survey, if you had a question about that. The purpose is to help communities better understand wastewater and also to help us identify and resolve any problems that may be with our systems. The report is broken down into two separate sections, a financial section and a collection section. On the financial section, they ask questions like, "Do we have a master plan? Do we collect impact fees? Have we done a rate study?" In the collection system, they ask us how much pipes that we have. Do we have a capital plan? And if we've had any overflow, stuff like that. Do you have any questions about the report?
Any questions for Greg on the MWPP? I see the signs around, you know, when you drive past a new development or whatever, has the SWMBP thing. Yeah, I see those, and people ask me what they stand for, and I say utilities, that's what it stands for. Okay, no questions. Looks like you're good. Thank you, sir.
That's it for us. Thank you.
Awesome. Wonderful. I just wanted to dovetail on the mayor's. I forgot, I was going to mention during the city council reports that to thank the mayor and our street staff for getting the stripes back on the road as temporary as they may be out there on Seventy-Eighth. I was getting a lot of comments, just about every time, just about every day. Every time I'd see anybody I knew, they'd say, "When are we getting the road striped back again?" So it was especially prevalent when the roundabout was striped by the contractor, but the road leading up to and leading away from the roundabout was not striped by the contractor, and that had to be our crews. So that was, yeah, that was a lot of fun for a couple of days. So appreciate restoring law and order to the West Side. All right, next item on the agenda is item six A. This is to receive public comment regarding Resolution Twenty-four dash zero twenty-six, authorizing the transfer of monies from enterprise funds to other city funds for fiscal year two twenty-five. And this will be Ms. Denise Stack coming up. Oh, this is Mr. Alan Anderson. You were just walking up, so I thought it was you. Denise is here to answer any questions that Alan can't, but let's go to Mr. Anderson.
I'm not going to hopefully say anything that's going to generate questions. In the utility bills that went out, there's different noticing requirements. Some items that require noticing require thirty days, some require seven, some require fourteen. What we're doing tonight, what the council's doing tonight is receiving public comment because the utility bills that went out 30 days ago said tonight was going to be a public hearing on the utility fund transfer. What you're doing tonight is you're going to receive public comment for anybody who's here that wants to discuss authorizing the transfer of monies from the enterprise to other city funds and hold the public hearing at the next city council meeting on June 26, 2024. So residents will have an opportunity twice to be able to speak on this item.
That was going to be my question is, they can speak tonight and on the 26th, correct?
That is correct. You will not be taking action tonight on 24-026. You're only receiving public comment and then you will move to the next item.
Awesome. Any questions for staff on that? All right, let's go to the public. If anybody is here who would like to speak on this issue, this is your chance. Don't all come up at once. We had a huge crowd and now we're down to just a few. All right, nobody's coming up to the mic. Anybody online who has raised their hand and liked to speak to this specific item?
There are seven individuals online, none of which have raised their hand. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment on that one and we'll be having a public hearing in three weeks on this one on June 26th. So feel free to come back. I'd say something about speaking twice on the same subject, but nobody spoke once. So we're good. Next item on the agenda is business item 7A. This is Resolution 24-025. Authorizing the pickup of certain public safety and firefighter employee retirement contributions. Ms. Steck.
This one I do have. So Resolution 2425 is authorizing us to pick up the contributions for public safety for the required contributions the employee would have to make to the Utah retirement system for their pension. This is increasing the pickup rate that you previously approved from 2.59% to 4.73%. And I think that the fiscal note is part of the resolution as well. Is there any questions about this resolution or about this action? This will stand until such time as you replace it with another resolution. So if URS does not require a pickup rate above this percentage, this resolution will stand. If anything is below it, then we will just allow this, I'm sorry, this resolution will stand until it exceeds the 4.59%. Thank you.
That's what I thought you were saying. Any questions for staff on this? Any discussion for council? This is a business item, so council discussion and/or motion. Mr. Councilmember Green.
I'm going to move to approve Resolution 24-025 authorizing the pickup of certain public safety and firefighter employee retirement contributions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by council member Green, seconded by council member Lamb. Any discussion to the motion? This is a big controversial, complicated thing. All right. Seeing no discussion, let's vote roll call style.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you for that. The next item on the agenda, item 7B on the agenda, presentation of the annual fraud risk assessment for fiscal year 2024. Ms. Denise Steck.
Thank you. This is just something that we present to you annually. There's no need for action outside of receiving the assessment or reporting on the assessment. This requirement started in the year 2020 by the state auditor's office. They ask each city to assess their risk. Our score has remained the same for all the years. We are receiving 375 out of 395 eligible points. We're missing 20 points because we do not have an internal auditor function within our city. While I perform internal controls on other departments, I do not, I'm not able to serve as budget, finance and internal auditor. That's just not enough separation of duties and we don't have anyone to perform that function at this time. So that would be the only points that we're missing out of this assessment, but we have a very high score. So thank you.
All right, questions. Councilmember Green.
That being said, since we, since we're down 20 points, you know, you know, that's, never mind, we won't talk about school grades when I went to school, down 20 points. But is, is that something, what is that 20-point hit, if you will, due to the city? Is it, is it something that if we were to consider an internal audit function, is it, is it worth the benefit to do that with the 20, to get the 20 points and to become perfect? You know, you see where I'm going?
I do. My personal opinion would be that at a municipal level, an internal audit function within a city outside of like a Salt Lake City would be a little bit excessive. However, you know, we could assign that to a member of the finance and accounting team. And pretty much an internal auditor focuses on continuous improvement in addition to internal controls for finance as well. And so yes, that function could be added. You just need to hire the right person for that. It's a lot of lean, a lot of continuous improvement as well as policy analysis and recommendations from the financial standpoint.
But the question is, again, would it be worth it? I, I mean, at the end of the day, what is, what does that 20 points do to us?
Right.
It does absolutely nothing.
Okay, yeah, that's, that was going to be my question as well, is if there's a a consequence, if there's a rating that we're not meeting or, you know, we're, we're double A plus instead of triple A because we're missing 20 points on this or something. You know, if there was some sort of consequence built into that, then it's a, then it's a risk benefit kind of analysis, right? But, or a cost benefit analysis to see if it's worth it. But if there's no punishment.
There's really no punishment to that. Honestly, if your, if your fraud risk assessment were at the moderate level, I'd be very concerned, right? But that isn't the, the case for the city. And so, and that would not catch the attention of the state auditor. I would dare say all but one city is probably at our same exact percentage or below.
Excellent. Wonderful. Any other questions for staff on this one? There's no action required here. It's just informational.
So it's all, we don't need to formally accept it or anything?
On an agenda and that was it.
Perfect. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent items. This is approving the minutes from May 15th. Councilmember Lamb.
Move to approve consent items?
Oh, who's hot? Councilmember Shelton's hot.
Second.
All right. Motion by council member Lamb, seconded by council member Shelton. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's why they call it consent. And it's approved. Passed unanimously. All right. Seeing the regular city council meeting then is, that's the agenda for this one. So seeing that agenda having concluded, we'll go ahead and declare the city council meeting adjourned. And Alan, what do